Uh, meeting order, first over business.
I don't know.
I'm just to redefine the United States of America and to the republic for which you're saying has one nation under God. It is visible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna do that. I got a phone number to make, okay, I'll do these minutes and then we'll do that before the comment period. Okay, um, looking for approval of regular session minutes of February the third.
I'll make that motion.
Vote, yes.
Yes.
Um, also looking for an approval for the special session minutes of February the tenth.
I'll make that motion.
Second, vote, yes.
Yes.
Okay, um.
You wanna do your, I agree.
Oh. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Perry Township Delaware County sewer development agreement. Further authorize trustee Andrew English, chairman of the board of trustees, to execute the same on behalf of the Perry Township Board of Trustees. So, I'm sorry.
Uh, second.
Vote, yes.
Yes.
We.
Here, I'll go, you go, Perry.
Um, okay, moving to public comment period, um, chair is not here.
Not here, he won't be, he won't be here tonight.
He won't be here, chair is near. Um, Brookside. Oh, here comes the show. Uh, Worthington Hills, from that, it's outside.
Um, we're in Hills, um, no report, uh, other than the, uh, development, there were surveyors on the property of three fifteen. And that's third of what the international, so we had, uh, yes, uh, we did have two water main breaks, which I believe have been.
Yeah, two water main breaks yesterday, there's been multiple in Worthington Hills this, this winter, uh. One on Blind Brook, uh, was draining the water tower pretty quickly, so they did have to shut the water down. They had it repaired, uh, we got them both repaired yesterday.
That's all, uh, Brookside.
Uh, I would just two things, actually, Ian, are you aware of the, uh, road sign, street sign that's tilted down? So, I don't know if one of the guys hit it in the truck, but it's at the corner of Miffler West and Milk Friday.
Oh.
So it's kind of listing to the side, um.
You go to face.
And then. Have we already done a motion to waive garage sale fees?
No, no, that's for this year.
Do you have the date yet for Worthington Hills?
I, I moved to waive garage sale fee for Brookside Civic Association, State Civic Association, as well as Worthington Hills Civic Association. Um, day four coming up.
Uh, second, both.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
There's a lot of pressure.
Uh, okay, uh, Epton Rebelo.
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, no report.
Uh, down to zoning. Um. Anything else?
Well, well, we, we, under old business, we're still working with, uh, Max and his team. Uh, I think last time we talked to Andy, we had two hundred and twenty notifications. I got a hold of Max and said, I need help, I can't type two hundred and twenty labels to mail your stuff out, and he said, I'll have my secretary do it, so.
Well.
They're working on the labels, we'll get the notices out, and then we'll set up a, uh, variance.
Karen.
There and probably won't make the first week of, on March, but we'll do as quick as we can.
Yeah. Uh.
But anyway, that's, that's under old business, under new business, we need a motion, uh, to authorize the township to execute an agreement with grants, yes? Does that mean say that, Luke?
Granicus.
Granicus, I'm sorry.
That's right.
For the Smart Go program, uh, and the pricings are shown here for twenty six, twenty seven, three fifteen. Three of twenty five through two of twenty six, three of twenty six through twenty seven, twenty seven through twenty eight, um.
So.
In the past year, just so you guys know, in the past year. Uh, fees for, uh, permits have covered this cost.
Okay.
Really isn't something that's, uh, coming out of the.
Uh, the office.
Office.
Okay. Who, who's familiar with that software program, like you and.
Me and Luke, well, he's familiar and I'm, I've met it.
So. Um, are we, so with the new zoning inspector, how, how are we, and I know we're gonna put, how, how are we gonna train Rick on this software?
So I will get him up to speed where he can get in. Figure out what needs to do to read, to approve a permit or not approve a permit. Ultimately, our, our real teacher will be Luke, because he still teaches me.
And his backup is the county has always offered technical support, so we have enough bench strength to be able to get him.
Isn't there also online training for that?
Uh, not sure, honestly.
Well, I just, I mean, in kind of like what we're, what we've been dealing with, it's like, you know, building the bench, and I know Michelle loves sports thing, but I think with all of the software.
All for balls.
All of the software packages that we have implemented, we need to look at our bench and make sure that the bench is, you know.
Well, I think, and I agree with that a hundred percent, I think this is an opportunity, at least for me, and it's been a little while since I was in that program before coming back, but. To sit with Rick and to sit with Luke will, will certainly renew, but when I left before, I was pretty comfortable with that whole program. And it's not, not hard to use.
It's pretty user-friendly.
Yeah, trust me, and if I can use it, Rick will be able to use it, I can use it, Chuck could use it.
Oh, wow.
Ooh, how about Mr. Walker?
No.
You were closest to me.
All right, so. So is this a three-year contract? Or we just, this is what it's.
Yes.
It's a three.
Really, what happened was Granicus bought out or bought Smart Go from Dude Solutions, which was with whom we had the original contract. Agreement, so this is the same agreement, but they need to be reauthorized, because it's a different company.
Okay.
That's basically.
The name sounds better.
It does.
I mean, it sounds more.
Sounds more like a company than Dude Solutions.
Well, Dude Solutions became Brightly, and then Granicus bought it from Brightly, it's very confusing.
Solutions, that's gotta catch your name, all right, I'm gonna make a motion to ex, to have the township administrator to execute the agreement with Granicus for the Smart Go enterprise zoning software. For twenty five, twenty six, for eight thousand eighteen ninety, for twenty six, twenty seven, eighty five, eighty twenty two, and twenty seven, twenty eight, for nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars and eighty four cents, I submit. Second, vote, yes. Anything else?
Nope.
Yeah, we'll get back to you the later, find out your new position. Um, road department.
Uh, under old business landscaping, uh, still working on getting wholesale pricing, uh, together for the, uh. Pedro trees.
We have, got a question.
Yes.
So, are we looking at, like, taking out all landscape, or are we keeping the Texas bushes and the zelkovas that are currently.
It's all gone.
Oh, no.
They say one zelk over.
I know, but how about we keep it, it's, looks good, and we just supplement it, didn't, didn't we just take it out?
It's all gone.
All right. Shit. I didn't even notice when I came in, which tells me how.
Well, I didn't notice until he told me.
I noticed, so.
Anyway. On the left, and the stump of another one, it might.
But it looks good now.
It's good now, because it's all covered as well.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, um, white, you know, it's.
We had a conversation about a gentleman that might be able to help us with pricing on landscaping and stuff.
Yes, and did you share that? I, so, we're going to, someone's going to Acorn, okay, we're gonna get some, so you're gonna have some pricing.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yes.
It'll, it'll be taken care of. I had a conversation an hour ago.
Okay. You know, we can get, I mean, you can go there and sign up for an account, I mean.
At Acorn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to go through, I mean, you can go directly there, sign an application, pay your.
Just got.
Then you get full set of pricing.
Question for you then, is, is it worth our while to set up our own account? I mean.
It could be, yeah, I mean, there is other landscape.
If you want, I'll go there and get something set up for the township.
Yeah, I mean, because government agency, landscape businesses, they're just gonna need to know your, and it's, and because we're nonprofit, make sure you take your nonprofit status, because they don't, you know, they don't carry that tax. So, yeah, they just need to know, hey, you're, you are who you are, and you should be able to set it up, and then you just go buy whenever you need to go buy it, you know.
I had also checked with our neighbor, uh, that has a, owns a nursery, and they didn't, weren't able to provide me pricing, that would be better than that, they said that's where they'd go.
Oakland gives us, like, the pricing that I have from Oakland, that they give us a twenty percent discount off their pricing, but.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say by buying it retail is that you get the one-year warranty, like, if we buy it from Acorn, uh, Acorn, and it dies, it's on us, but. If you get the one, you at least have one-year warranty built in, so.
Depends what the difference is, right?
And I shouldn't see.
The same.
Yeah.
It'd be some if we know that some are more likely than we buy those retail.
Yeah, I wanna get through this one.
EMI has already started.
But at least we don't need.
Landscaping, plans over next door.
Doesn't mean we can't go through those racks.
All right. Uh, then on to.
We'll talk.
Put together like a spreadsheet that's in the, uh, share folder, kind of like the complex, the maintenance needs to kind of look at the priorities. Uh, they're gonna be need, need to be done to get us, or keep us up and running. Uh, like our roofs in building two, we have several leaks. Uh, we've tried repairing our, ourself, uh, the wood is rotten underneath the shingles, uh, needs replaced, a little too big for us. And really, the whole roof, so all three buildings need done eventually.
So, Mr. Chairman, I talked to Ian, to begin a list with the department heads, then to sit down with the administrator to figure out what's the highest priority, and their opinion. There, there's a lot on the list, but they had to figure that out.
Ian, let me ask you this, as we look at the roofs. Is there any, I know they're more expensive, but is there any advantage to going to metal roofs?
I don't think there would be.
Okay, I just, I mean, the, the lifespan of a metal roof is so much longer than a shingle roof. Um. If we get to a point where we're gonna be investing in new roofing, and we're looking long-term. Probably need to just explore all those options, and again, I've, I've never priced a metal roof, I just know they're more expensive, but.
Yeah.
I would think there's far less issues with the metal roof once it's installed for a commercial building of this type.
I would think that, oh, the pricing that I put in there was from estimates in two thousand nineteen. That's on there, uh. That's just to replace the shingles with what they had, but, I mean, that's, that's just one of the many items that, the issues that we have.
Just curiosity, what? Maybe this explains it, what is the mini split?
If you've got a building two in our lounge area. It's, it's a little wall, I see, here, it's similar to what's in the server room.
Wow.
Um, building two, during the winter, the office end is really hot, the other end is cold, uh, we've had. This year and last year, in our shower, the shower knobs freeze and bust while we haven't been here. The water lines for those run through that end of the building, through the roof. Uh, so it's, it's just a little nerve wracking when we don't have heat.
Yeah, I just didn't know what a mini split was, that's what, I didn't know what that was, that's all.
Yeah.
Got it.
This is just the start of the list.
Sure.
Cool, and we'll talk about it, I, I shared it with Luke and Steve.
Put it all together.
I don't think it was a sports term.
Put it all on this computer. I can't do a full school.
Uh.
So many.
It's your playbook.
So one leg forward, one leg back.
Challenge playbook.
Yeah, that it, thank you, I know what a playbook is.
Remember on the, on Franklin County resurfacing estimate, uh, or the Candlewood project, Mark. Estimated our project for Candlewood included in the, uh, resurfacing for this year. Uh, his estimate came in two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars higher than the original project estimate. Uh. Chuck and I are trying to set up a meeting with the county to, to, to discuss how the estimates are so different, uh. The department, the programming department that did the application, uh, used a different estimator for the project, uh, than Mark.
Big number.
It is, it is a big number, uh. The original estimate, the project estimate did not include, uh, the fiber mat. Uh, it was in the letter when we requested assistance that we wanted the project with fiber mat. Uh, they did not include that, nor did they include restoration. Uh, both of those equal about a hundred and ten thousand, hundred and twenty thousand difference. Uh, in those, and then Mark's numbers.
The materials.
The materials are a little higher.
Restoration, the rejuvenation stuff?
It's topsoil seed.
Oh, 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 restoration, I'm scared.
Topsoil seed, which should have been included, uh. Now, there wasn't even flag showing up, because my project estimate was very similar to what OPWC's estimate, the application came back in at, so. I didn't, I didn't have any reason to question.
We're gonna have a conversation with county engineer and spokes, and not throw anybody under the bus, or disparage anybody, but if you got two sections not talking to each other, but they're all under the county engineer, and there's a little problem there. Either they help us finance, first of all, we need to understand why, why this is, and get that understanding, and then. Um, the second thing is, can they financially assist us with this problem? Uh, we also need to have a conversation with Morpsy about the actual grant, can it be spread out, can we invoice it differently, can we do something to make that not a little less crack? Uh, but at the end of the day, they're not gonna give us more money, we don't have. Um, and, um, so, uh, we have to figure out a plan B. Um, and that's our entire resurfacing budget for one year. So, I need our administrator to go with us, they've worked super tender, carrying that being county engineers. Okay, guys, we're gonna, gonna make this right, because it ain't right.
Yeah.
So. Uh, the, the other option is, is that there's a couple streets we've talked about.
Well, I thought about, well, I may ask Ronnie, the girl that helped us with the application, if we could cut. Marklin, Mark Haven from the project, that would get us down back to that local match, uh, we would need to let Morpsy know. Pretty soon, if that was something we wanted to try, uh, but when we do that, it puts our application back up for review.
It puts you at risk.
Of losing it all.
Although we work very well with OPWC, they have to, they have to treat everybody the same way.
And on the scoring. I don't know how it would affect our scoring with those streets coming off, uh, but we only scored a couple points higher than Madison Township on the application, so a couple points could put us underneath Madison.
We're talking.
Let's. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, when do, when do we, when do you need to know?
Mark, Mark is gonna need to know which way we wanna go, uh, I did ask, I talked to him about if there was nothing we could do, and that we are. If we are gonna be responsible for the extra two hundred and twenty-two thousand. If we could push the whole project until next year, just carry over our resurfacing budget issue and start next year. Uh, but he would need to know very soon, uh, to do that, because this project is twenty-five percent of the resurfacing program this year, uh. With us taking it off, he has to rework all the other township's numbers.
Right. And that, and it's, the, 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 the difference is mostly the fiber mat?
Seventy, roughly seventy-one thousand is the fiber mat, uh. And then, uh, I think it was forty-four.
Is another forty to fifty.
And that's what we do after, like, a year after we put the, that.
No, this is, the restoration is the topsoil.
Oh.
Behind the curves and gutters.
Sorry.
You're very nice about that, I was about to.
You're an Asian, that's weird.
Yeah.
Now, I will say, like, Mark's estimates. I know we can't go off of it, but he tends to estimate by, uh, this year, we were invoiced, it was fifteen thousand dollars under. The year before, we were invoiced, it was, uh, seventy, right around seventy thousand less, but that was also minus. The Sammy that was included in the estimate, but it's still, that would have still been forty thousand, that was a circle of gray.
So, like, from a percentage perspective, I'm seeing.
I saw the records.
I'm trying to remember, I don't recall what the, what the percent high is, is he like ten percent high?
Uh, I have never done the percentage.
It varies every year, if we're close.
Idea, yeah.
It's, years have been really frustrating, because when it comes in invoiced, and we're quite a bit lower, and another street could have been done, and.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yep. More to come.
We'll be back on the agenda on the third.
Uh, anything else, road department?
That's it.
Fireman, EMS?
Nothing to report.
Police?
Nothing to report this time.
Uh, administrator.
Uh, under old business, we're still, um, talking about software solutions. And, Andy, you, you had asked if any payments have been made, we have not been able to find it, we made any payments, although the contract stipulated that we should have.
They would, I, I would imagine they would have been.
They would have been at our front door.
But at, at the end of the day, we, we've not done anything with that, so maybe that's why they haven't invoiced us anything, but, um. If you, if you wanna take a look at that folder with the whole packet, I can get that for you, I'll let you have a look through it.
That would have been, that would have been in the, if that's something we would have been able to find in UAF.
Yeah.
That, at least the first one, I would think, yeah.
Yeah.
Faith is, it shows, run every piece of that idol, and has not been able to come up with any payment, this name is all.
So, my question, didn't we, didn't we use the, um, the money for this?
But.
Yeah, but still would it.
We still would have had to have written a check.
Yeah, right.
You know what, let me, let me look, did she look in Huntington already, just to try to find, if not, I can look.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure where she looked, she just said she, she went through her checking account, and so, so nothing.
If it was the checking account, then that's where Huntington was, I was just gonna look for the dollar amounts.
Yeah.
No, I mean, we're decent.
That would have been the check I saw.
I imagine if she, if she, oh, I'm sorry.
Luke has.
Yeah, we have, I've, when I was going through the expenses, I saw at least one check for software solutions, and the amount of twenty thousand dollars, it was, it stated April twenty-second last year. So, at least.
Twenty-four, twenty.
Yeah, April twenty-second, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand?
No, twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand, yeah. That would, so it was a sixty thousand dollar bid rate contract.
Right.
It was.
The first one would have been before that, I would have thought. Do you remember what those dates were on that second?
No. Okay.
Well, I, I thought that we paid them something.
Right.
What we've, we did. Yes, that's what I. But there's a check for that now. I didn't remember the date or the, the amount, so.
Faith, Faith was unable to find that, though, once she looked for it, so I don't know.
Okay.
Um, I don't remember where he got it, this is all the expenditures that he put together, because he shared a copy with me, so we knew it was there.
I forgot, I gave you the contract.
Yeah, I think it's in my office right now.
That's good. That's okay.
All right. Under new business, um, we talked about the need to bring in a new zoning guy, um, I have a gentleman that I would like to hire by name, Rick Paul. So I would like a motion by the board to employ Mr. Paul as our part-time zoning inspector at a rate of thirty-one fifty an hour. Working generally twelve to fifteen hours a week, but up to twenty hours during peak season if necessary.
Uh, Mr. Chair, go ahead and make that, I'd like it to prove a contingent upon you having a conversation with him by week's end.
Mm-hmm.
You want me to make that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to hire Rick Paul for the position of part-time zoning inspector at a rate of thirty-one dollars fifty cents per hour, up to twenty hours per week. As needed, with the contingency that the chair of the board has a conversation and approves of the hiring.
Yeah. Um, I'll second, vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, um. We need to have a discussion about, um, Amanda Cavini. For the office of.
Are we gonna do that in?
It's a big sacrifice.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll, we'll move that one down, um. So why don't, why don't we go through the rest of your, why don't we go through the rest of your.
Okay.
Thing, and then we'll move that to the end.
Uh, we, we've had some issues, it's been going on for as long as we hired this company, Yellow Ford Cleaning Company. Uh, everybody is unhappy with the services they provide, um, so I had Lori. Get together, and she kind of headed up a, a team to go out and research other companies, and who, who, who's happy with their services and things of that nature. So Lori came back with three bids with a recommendation that, uh, we'd go to another company called Stratus Building Solutions. So first, I need a resolution, I need a motion from the board to terminate our agreement with Yellow Ford, that we can get out of that with thirty-day notice. And once we do that, then I would like a motion to authorize the township to execute an agreement with, uh, Stratus Building Solutions for their janitorial services.
On the same cost.
Um, I sent you guys, I think, a breakdown of those costs at some point.
Those are the, they're in the meeting folder.
Yeah. But Stratus was the, uh, of the three bids that we got, Stratus was the best price.
Okay.
Can I tell you how much I miss Dropbox? On it.
Yes. I'm there with you, I like Dropbox. Wonderful.
Change is hard.
Um, well, you can get the first motion out of me, how about that?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to terminate the agreement with Yellow Ford deep cleaning for janitorial services, providing a thirty-day notice.
Um, second, vote.
Yes.
Yes.
I saw this, you wanted to go with Stratus, right?
Yes.
And I apologize if I missed it in here, can you refresh, what are we paying Yellow Ford now compared to the quote?
Hmm, I can't bring mine up.
This is, this is seven forty-five a month, one time a week for the three buildings. Let's see.
I believe it's one thousand one hundred and thirty-one we're paying months to Yellow Ford, because it's divided by three seventy-seven per building.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so, is this some sort of incentive pricing that's gonna change, or are we actually?
No, no, this is, there is, this is their bidding cost.
I like it.
There is one thing I wanna add, if we wanna see if they'll do it twice a week in our building for six months.
Yeah, I'm, well, whether they will, whether, whether they won't, we still wanna go with them, that's my other.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but at some point during the winter months, because of the traffic at the police department, we would like them to actually come in twice a month there.
They were thinking like, no better.
Just take your boots off. You can just take your boots off and let them outside the door.
People completely do. We're thinking like November to like April, just kind of do twice a week, because the rest of the time, we all agree once a week is enough.
Okay. Time, um. You're wrong.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Uh, Ms. Chairman, I moved authorized attached administrative executive agreement with Stratus Building Solutions for janitorial services for their proposal.
Uh, second vote?
Yes. Okay, um. Mr. Hopper isn't able to come. I think y'all got an email from him, maybe not. He's got the flu or COVID, so he's not gonna be here.
I doubt he is.
And finally, um, we need to have discussion about the law director agreement with Franklin County.
So, uh, I met with the county prosecutor, which is the first assistant, um. Because we're home rule, we require a law director. We just executed one for Gary Tyack, who's in my office now, sale is to the county prosecutor, same arrangement, dollar per year um, for services. We tend not to use the prosecutor's office. I mean, we do on occasion, but not that often, uh, just because of their heavy workload, you don't get response time, although they do call you back, I know, so. Um, so the agreement is going to be basically change the names to protect the MS and still have it on the March third agenda. And it'll be attached, have you signed and then moved on there in our office or sign.
So, I have to say nothing tonight. Right. That. Then the officer.
Okay, in your, uh, materials, there is the, uh, amended resolution accepting the amounts and rates that's determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies. I have a motion for saying.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a motion for preferable in persons.
I'll make that motion.
Second vote? Yes.
Yes. And we have an executive session. Anything else? Okay, um, so I moved to recess and do executive session per O R C one, one, that's two, two, G one, consider the appointment and or employment dismissal or discipline of a public employee if I roll top vote.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Chan?
Yes. Those two.